Please tell me where it is.
I just naturally gravitated.
I nailed it.
All right. Hi, everybody. Thanks for being here tonight. We have packed agenda. So let's get started. Let's see, starting with the roll call to establish that we have a forum, starting with John.
Here.
Jen.
Here.
Nicole.
Here.
Juan Carlos.
Here.
Corby.
Here.
And I'm here as well. We officially have a quorum. Nicole has the meeting in public notice. And Juan Carlos, could you start us off with the equity framework and our land acknowledgement?
Yes. The Verona area school district's mission is to reach students who acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals and thrive in a diverse global society and do healthy self improvement in life. To meet this mission, the Verona area school district will ensure that every individual has access to the educational, social, and emotional support they need to feel valued and affirm their identities and experiences. We acknowledge that inequities and power dynamics exist in our system such that some individuals, on the basis of their identities, face barriers to accessing the opportunities they need to experience success. In acknowledgement of such, the Verona area school district is committed to disrupting these systems of.
Land acknowledgement.
There are currently 12 tribal nations who call Wisconsin home, with the Ho-Chuck Nation being the primary group living around Madison. No matter where you are in the state, you are on the ancestral land of the tribal nation. As we begin our day, we honor the land upon which we stand.
Thank you so much for starting us off with kind of grounding our work tonight. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at tonight's agenda? Any questions? Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
Some.
Motion from Jen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Nicole. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
The meeting has been officially adopted. With that, we can go into the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us here today. And thank you, Board, for setting what I think is a very full but meaningful agenda for our work here tonight for our public. What we want to open up is a kind of a continuation of a celebration as well as a full, further transparency to our community of the work of our Verona School District school counselors. And so we have two amazing members of our counseling staff here to provide some insight to our board as well as to our broader community of the vast range of work that our counselors do at the multiple levels here in our organization. And as a continuation of the celebration, which you know should go much farther than a week, which was Counselors Week, which was, which was last week. So due to introduction, we're going to invite Dr. Jackson to the, to the stage. Our director of people services to introduce the counselor to you. I love that face.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here to welcome Ms. Carrie Hale, who is at and Mr. Ben Laxton, who is my lead elementary counselor. Ben is at Glacier Edge and Carrie is here at the high school, and they're going to share just some of the great work that our whole community believes. It is really a privilege to work with these two amazing leaders in our whole community.
So as Dr. Jackson said, I am Ben Laxton. I am the school counselor at Glacier Edge Elementary School and will lead counselor K through eight. Carrie and I share six and eight together. So K five and six eight.
And I am Carrie Hale. I am the counselor at Verona area high school, which is my help.
So today we're here to just talk about who we are and what we do as a school council team.
Ben and I counted heads of school counselors, and total there are 17 school counselors in the Verona area school district across the district.
So as our K five team, we have me at Glacier Edge, Miriam Brown, Stoner, Sherwood Creek. We have two counselors because that is a large school. Emily Valdivia and Jayden Wyler. Cornell is Kaylee Garland. You'll see her name on there twice because she's at Core. And there are K eight school. Country View is Rachel Rishow, or M. New Searcher V I S is Lisa Frank. At the K five level, we spent a good part of our day, just a good part of our time as counselors, doing short-term counseling with students, small groups, support supplement, SEL curriculum. Our teachers actually teach the SEL curriculum, social emotional learning, but then as counselors, we supplement it, we support it, we help, we fill in what needed, things like that. Also support students experiencing big emotions, assist students with problem solving skills. That's a big one. We spend a lot of our time helping students solve friendship problems, school problems, life problems, everything like that. And then collaborating with staff with the best ways for students to achieve their success. Our six eight team, at Savannah Oaks, we have Kit Lybly and Sarah Holzner. At Badger Ridge, we have Amy Pittman and Elvis Ajong. And at Core, as you saw, we have Kaylee Garland. Six eight, again, they spend a lot of time doing short-term counseling, small groups, social emotional support to students. Social emotional learning is, is due to the middle school. They're starting that. They're doing it in sixth and seventh grade, and then next year, eighth grade, we'll be doing it as well. So that's something that they're piloting as they go through the curriculum that we have academic and career planning they do. They do transitions for students coming into and out of middle school. They get a lot of transitions at the middle school level. Supporting students at staff through problem solving. Part of the MLS's team coordinating student service support and family community connections as well.
So here at the high school, we have two houses. So we have 1,800 students altogether. And to help make smaller communities, we have House One and House Two. So the counselors are by team. There are six of us all together. So I'm Carrie Hale. I have Team One A. I have the smallest team because I also serve as department chair. Kelly O'Connell is One B, One C. Leslie Morrison, One D. And then in House Two, Whitney Darris has Two A, Kaju Wang with Two B, Two C. And I'm Hagera Vasquez with Two D. So at the school, at the high school level, I've got it broken down into the three domains the high school counselors really focus on. And this is for our ASCA, which is American School Counselor Association Standards. So the general personal social supports, we're working with students one-to-one. We're helping them daily. We're meeting with them, supporting them, whatever it is that they are just needing adults in their lives. To have strong relationships and value them for who they are as individuals. And academic support, we work again with transition, riding ninth graders from the middle school. We advise for course selection. So that's a lot of helping students figure out their pathways, no matter what pathway that they are going on. We help support them with those pathways and deciding what classes will help them get there. And then we're also general supports for LEAP, which is our audit program. Supports for students in any event, Avid, STEM, multilingual learners, and Tree. We support different programs across size as well. And then the third domain is community and ready, career and community supports. And that's really that academic planning, that post-secondary thinking, creating action plans, making sure students know what's on their transcripts, what graduation requirements are, and how those connections help open doors. So very much about opening doors because we know our young people don't necessarily know exactly what they're going to do and want every possibility open for their future. The very last slide is connected to the ASCA team. So again, that is the American School Counselor Association. That is the group that supports the National School Counselor Week. And the four main themes really define our work, and that is leadership, advocacy, collaboration, and systemic change. And I just think about the work of the district and how nicely that group values things does really fit in to support the overall work and the importance of what school counselors do and how we help our whole community. There is a link. I think Tracy linked it in. We for National School Counseling Week, each of the school counselors. So the focus of the week was standard-based, student-focused. And every counselor from all 17 of us had a line in there with who we are. And then there's the standard that we follow. So we follow standards that are ASCA standards, what standard we follow, and then how that student focus meets the basic standard of the work we do. So that's linked into you. We know we don't have the time to go over all of that with you today, but we just wanted to reference it because it turned out really cool.
Question? Yes.
First, just because I noticed it, on slide 12, just want to elevate that that should be Savannah Oaks with Kit and Sarah. It says Stoner Prairie. So just.
Yeah.
I know. I'm a big heart for Savannah. So I'm going to just.
Yeah.
I just opened mine. So, okay, good. All right, great. That helps. I was looking at my screen. And then I'm just curious. I know you mentioned that A, B, like how you're splitting the teams, particularly with the high school, but I'm just curious from your honest perspective, there's one counselor at every elementary school. I'm sure I could calculate mathematically that there are six of you in the high school, like just how, how that works to have that student to counselor ratio and just how you, you know, just your thoughts about ensuring that you all can do the jobs you want to be doing when it's a lot of students. I think you're each responsible for.
I'll start with the elementary level. While there's one counselor, we have three student service members at each of the buildings except for at Incentry V I S, which just has two. They are a small school. So we work really well, at Glacier Edge especially. I know my team, we work really well together on sharing a lot of those roles, right? Like so our social worker, our psych, and I do all of those same things that I put up there together. We are happy to cover for each other. We're happy to step in. We're happy to do all of that stuff. And I think that's one of the things that makes our school run really well is that we're just all willing to step in and do the work. And it doesn't feel overwhelming or like, like there's more students than I can handle because there's two other people who are willing to do the same job I do. So.
I want to give a shout out to the district this year for doing roll alike, letting it start. So for the first time in maybe seven years, K 12 counselors have been able to meet.
First time in.
Yes, I've been around it. So that's really helpful because we're not alone. You're part of the seventh, we're not the same, we're not the same. And particularly at the high school, there's six of us here, and we meet regularly. We meet every week because there's a lot going on. So we're here for each other to lift each other up. And the importance of the integrated student services team, the counseling team is one piece of it. So I think you'll be hearing from school social workers and others, but at the high school, we are actually an exemplary model of what an integrated student services team looks like that I have presented at the state level for my national or my state organization to say that school counselors collaborate with school social workers, school nurses, school psychologists, associate principals, principals. We are together, working together to collaborate. We are a team. So being a part of that team is really a great thing, a part of the reason Carrie Hale's in her 18th year here. Do you want to hear his little story? Because I'm supported by a team. And I'll just stay away from like the numbers and all of that this evening because I just want you to know how positive it is to be a part of this district and the teamwork that we have going.
That's huge. Yeah. I mean, that's an amazing. Thank you for sharing all that information. Super helpful for us and those board members to have that broader understanding of how you all are functioning as a team and as individuals.
Yeah. Thank you for sharing, especially as we know that you're the one supporting our students through big feelings. It's great to know that there's support that you're having from your colleagues and that I'm glad to know the district has started that time and made sure that that's available. In nine years, that seems like a.
My third year was we did. And then this is your, the first time we did, my ninth year. So this is the first time we've done them again.
That's great.
So we've met at the K five team. We consistently meet at the K five team like every month. That's happening my whole time, but we haven't met as a whole team.
And to see the trajectory of the entire process for a student to student isn't just a.
And there's been so much change. Carrie, Carrie and Leslie, here at the high school, are the only people who were still at the high school from my first year. So like meeting all three councils this year was, was big, like just giving the building ball. So.
I'll just put in a plug if you ever want me to come back and share integrated student services and what that looks like as a full team I've become. That would actually be kind of cool because before you said it, I was wondering like, how are the APs integrated? Because I know they're very purposeful as well in trying to stick with kind of a core set of kids. And so I would love to hear. I got a little bit of.
Oh, you're speaking our language. Yeah.
I also just wanted to give a quick shout out to the K five counselors because I think at least when parents come out of daycare, whether that's in a center or in a home, and come into a very kind of more rigorous institution of a school, and then you have a school counselor call you, it can be very intimidating and like, oh my God, what is my child doing? And I think the ability of counselors in K five schools to not only work with kids who are dealing with that adjustment, but to also help parents and guide them through and normalize behaviors and say like, well, this is age appropriate. They're just expressing and, you know, in this way, and we're just trying to channel it. I just, I really appreciate that, especially that K one piece. I think counselors are such the face of welcoming families into the district, especially their first time interacting with school and more traditional forces. Because oftentimes you don't have a dedicated counselor or psych at a childcare facility. So I appreciate the face that they're putting forward to those families.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Well, we appreciate the work that you're doing, and we'd love having you come in tonight so you can share with us and so that we can then also be better informed as we talk about what's going on in our district or the community. So thank you for all of the work that you do on behalf of our students. It's great to, to hear firsthand. So thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Do we want to do the indicators after we do the report monitoring? So we can. I'm wondering if we want to go ahead and start, and start with the results monitoring so we can have presentations just as far as streamlining for staff.
I'll need. Yes, that's fine.
Board, I was thinking, do we want to go ahead and do results monitoring first and then circle back to the indicators?
I think that would make.
Use stuff.
Yeah, get the results in. Yeah, we can. So that would be starting with our 2.2.4. Is that just consideration for people's time?
Yeah.
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 So for reference, we'll start with 2.2.4, which is health and physical education monitoring.
As we open up to begin to look at our results, you're going to see some trends that also lead to some of the deeper conversations that will lead to some of the deeper conversations that we've had and must continue to have around our, our data selection processes. Now that we are much deeper into understanding the ramifications of evidence, you'll see some trends where a leadership move drastically increase in area participation for a group. And then because we said evidence based off, and the board has brought this up as a concern, based off percentages of participation. There are only so many places the students can go. I also want to go ahead and put into the space for a long-term, deeper conversation, but I feel like there's no better time than the present to, to be able to put into this space that I think it is, will be appropriate for us to look at what it means to graduate from the Verona area school district in terms of graduation requirements, both in totality of credits and in totality of experience. When you're looking at electives and choices, which you also count our electives and choices with the opportunity to necessarily not attend the school because of a you have the flexibility. I've either capped out the number of credits I need and I can go, or there are open spaces in a schedule where, which allow them to go. And having a mindset, well, I'm just going to stay anyway and take electives. It's not always going to be the choice of our, of our, of our teenagers in a teenage mind. So I, you know, rightfully so, when we put these in place, they were to lead to deeper conversations and to lead to deeper eye openings of cause, cause and effect. And I think instead of just kind of saying, well, we're, students are moving from point A to point B and back and forth, begin to ask ourselves why? And what is it within our system that's, that's leading to, you know, some of the, some of the gaps that we may be, they might be saying. So much deeper and broader conversations needs to happen about this, family input, student input. And definitely guidance and leadership from our Board of Education. But I just, I don't know if I've actually openly publicly stated the need for a deeper look at our requirements to graduate relative to the, the number of experiences that we offer but that aren't always taken advantage of because there's not necessarily a reason to stay in a, in a full school there. Makes sense. All right. So with that, we're going to turn it over to Amy to begin to talk about the immediate results of the monitoring reports for both physical education. And we'll pause there and then we'll move to our second one. We intentionally went in reverse order on these because that'll kind of tell a better story of our cause and effect of what is, what is inspired. All right.
Thanks, Max, clearly. And thanks for having us tonight to begin the series of result policies that Dr. Carrie alluded to. There are multiple result policies that are really grounded in enrollment data, including many of the indicators around increases, so creative performing arts, well, language, becoming PE, et cetera. And we recognize in doing so that the enrollment data can tell us some things, as Dr. Carrie alluded to, and there's still an area to lean in and understand further. What are the other quality indicators that we're looking at for our students? But ultimately, it's great to follow the counselors who just spoke about the important goal that they plan, helping students to chart their path and identify their first line of goal. Because regardless of what the numbers look like on here, in the end, that's what we're trying to do is to support our students to make sure that they have a path through Verona area high school, really six, 12, that helps to meet, meet their long-term goals. And for some students, that might be leaning into more PE and FIAD classes, and for other students that are in music, but we want to make sure that we have those access points for our students along the way. So with that, we will dive into what we see in our, our 2.2.4 in terms of health and physical education. So just to re-ground us, all of our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students are required to take physical education per DPI, and they do that and meet that requirement. There's one elective at the middle school level that our students can take in regards to physical education, and it's the classical fitness for life, the seventh and eighth grade student. Previous to last year, we'd seen a great demand, many students interested in fitness for life. We couldn't actually staff the demand. Our scheduling, our staffing didn't allow for that. This last year, some of the leadership moves that our principals leaned into and the staffing and scheduling allowed for, we added six sections of fitness for life at the middle school level. So as you can imagine, that's six more sections of students that have access to elective health and PE at the middle school level. At the high school level, we also saw an increased demand for our FIAD classes. Students at the high school have to take 1.5 credits for the graduation requirements of physical education. Anything above 1.5 is considered elective. And we saw an increase in the number of students doing that as well. So in terms of our two indicators, overall, across the board, all of our students, we saw an overall enrollment increase for elective health and physical education classes from 22, 23 to 23, 24. When we look at indicator one A, we also see an increased percentage of students in our focus groups accessing health and elective physical education courses as well. Looking specifically at the numbers, some of the numbers for our focus group students, the percentage has nearly doubled. And we attribute that back to those leadership moves and opening more sections of fitness for life for students, when students demonstrating their interest and then having access in that one. You'll see the opposite side of that when we look at creative performing arts, because those are the classes that students are then not in because they're in fitness for life. So, so here we have that trade-off, but feel strongly that students that opted into these courses really felt passionate about this, and this was part of their own personalized goal and objective. And add them for indicator two from elementary.
At the elementary level, physical education is a part of every student's experience kindergarten through fifth grade at all of our elementary schools. That is just part of our core curriculum. And so the best evidence of this indicator at the elementary level is uplifting the amazing work of our physical education teachers in the district and the intentionality with which they plan their instruction. The first two links have to give credit to the Sherwood Creek team, shows how they have taken the many different scanners that they are required to teach students and build that out for units over the course of the year and over the course of a student's kind of K five, K five experience. And then the third will give credit to the Country View team, speaks to how they look at building skills over grade levels. Because think if any one of us walked into any of our amazing PE classes and would see kids laughing, smiling, happy and tired, and, you know, playing a game. I think sometimes, you know, the amazing instruction that happens in those environments, we lose sight of the intentionality and the standards that are met that in order to be able to play a game of baseball, you know, later in your elementary career, have to be able to learn how to transfer your weight from one foot to another, to be able to throw and step with your opposite foot, to be able to catch. And those are skills that are built and are scaffolded and are differentiated, or just the same way math and reading and writing and other critical areas are done. And give a lot of credit in, in all of that skill building and intentionality, there is a rhyme and reason to every single thing our physical education teachers do. And those three artifacts speak to the, the way that they plan all of that. And just like our counselors called attention to the roll alike time, would be remiss if I didn't, you know, name the, the work that our physical education teachers are doing, getting together across levels. I'm already getting there. Thank you. To be meeting, to be able to share ideas, to be able to share things that have worked, you know, beyond the units that they're teaching, the materials that they have access to, as well as some of the different scaffolds that they're using to accommodate different student needs as a district that includes all of our students in that, in that instruction. And it made really amazing use of that time. And Jake Ma, who is the PE teacher, Jeannie, is kind of the. And Jake Ma, who is the PE teacher, G, is kind of the coordinator of that work, I believe, that was at the elementary level for our counselor, Jake, is that correct? PE teachers in Florida.
So leaning into that role, lifetime remains a really important leadership move in order to continue sustaining the work of, of this results policy and making sure that our students have access to elective PE and health. And that their, that work is standards aligned, and we see the vertical articulation for our students along the way. Other leadership moves as we lean into this results policy, really continuing to use student course selections to drive our scheduling decisions. That's what, that's what principals are deep in right now, reviewing course selection to make the schedule for next year. That's how OWE eleven dictates we look at schedules is by responding to student interest and student voice. Other pieces and leadership moves here are recognizing that students can only act into courses that exist in the course guide. So what are we doing to get student voice to make sure that the electives that we're offering really do reflect where student interests are? And so that's an ongoing process, specifically at the middle school and high school level, to make sure. Last year, we added an outdoor adventures class in physical education, and now we're seeing those sections grow, right? And so how, what other sections don't exist yet, weather classes don't exist yet, but we need to talk to students to see what their interests are and make shift in that direction as well. So those are some of the leadership moves to make sure that we can continue maintaining our momentum in this area. Also recognizing, recognizing the numbers won't always continue to increase, but truly how, how do we know that we're meeting student needs? And that the classes that we have for students align with their personal trajectory in their first life school?
So that wraps up two point two point four. What questions do we have?
Can I call? Um, I don't know if it works the same way in the state of Wisconsin. I probably should. Do, do extracurricular sports count as PE credits?
As a district, we have, we have not moved in that direction.
Okay, so they have to take formal media education for that to count as credit. Okay, thank you.
Just a quick comment here.
I need to clarify, we asked the question, is it allowable to say to Wisconsin, yes?
Oh.
Yes.
Um, just in, in addition to the leadership moves, I would like to just elevate the fact that I think there's staff willingness and moves to make these new courses come to life. I mean, we're not, if we come up with an outdoor experiences class, we're not hiring someone new to do that. These are our in-staff folks that are being willing to be this flexible and creative on behalf of students, so just really lifting up our educators. And I have also heard that the benefit of the K-five time alike for especially our specials or related arts team is just really. Having, I think those rules here may be a little less isolating, you know, when you're again kind of the only person at your site. And just a personal anecdote after mine, twenty-five years in public education, I recently was a substitute teacher for elementary PE and bless them all. Kindergarten and first graders on scooters, I'll just say that. I mean, wow, just amazing, though, you all out there, elementary PE educators, amazing.
Thanks, Dr. Lee. Huge credit to our staff who would not be able to allow these additional sections for build out these new classes. If staff, staff weren't willing to uplift those student voices, put in the time to build the curriculum and experiences, rearrange their schedules to make these sections possible. So the continued collective commitment to access has really, really been important, and we're seeing the results here first. Any other questions from the board?
The one thing I also like to add, I realize I didn't mention that, but the way that our layered arts teachers, you know, getting. Topic of today, our physical education teachers have embraced the idea of disciplinary literacy in the way vocabulary can speak to the elementary level and be uplifted. For our students and in our tweet sites in English and in Spanish for some of the skills that they're learning, they're taking. Opportunities to talk about the meaning of some of these physical education terms. And what it means for students are really exciting moves, and it's also.
Yeah, also, I, I would add that, I mean, it's been great seeing K-five be interested in fitness as part of their lifestyle. Whether it's playing a sport or just being more active, I just see that kids are enjoying what they're learning, so they want to come home and apply it, which is apparent, it's great because you want to be as tired as possible. So I appreciate, appreciate the answers.
Okay, any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept our two point two point four as presented? There is a motion by Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Jen. At this time, the board can discuss any comments by the board. I think as we look at this, I think one of the things that I want to lift up is we are running into the, the percentage problem. Joe, I'm taking your line here.
I'm so sorry.
Yeah, the percentage problem, and I, it makes me, I, I think the, Amy, I think you highlighted this, that it's important that we have provided, we, we've eliminated barriers to participation. I think that is a huge piece that we do need to be measuring, and so I think there's been a purpose for the, the percentages. I think, as a board, I think we need to evaluate what are, what do we want to be accomplishing with this policy? We wrote a policy, what did we want to have our students gain from this policy? And I think that's something that we need to be looking at, what's the purpose, I mean, having a policy for policy's sake really is pretty hollow. And I think I want to at least have a conversation at some point about. Is this fitting the, the needs that we have and the expectations we're setting a course? Which course are we setting for our students? And I think when we originally did this with the indicators, again, we were coming in to a, something that had no scaffolding, no framework, no metrics, no measurement. We were doing something brand new, and as a board, we were doing something brand new. So I think maybe our clarity, you know, clarity in writing the policy was. A learning process, which I think has been good, and I think we're at a point now, though, where maybe we take it to the next step as a, at a policy level. Or at a thoughts from the board, thoughts from admin, and just where, this is, as I'm reading this, I, I feel like we. And we're hearing great information about, you know, tweet about course selection being responsive to student voice and needs, and I'm wondering. Maybe how are we telling the story of that great work that's going on? Is that captured as what the board has put out?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I, I do, I know, know that there's going to be a need for deeper conversation, especially as we begin to look at. Rightfully so, or looking at participation, the long focus, focus areas, and some key examples that we'll come up with in the next one as well. Whether our, you know, cause and effect with the physical education pieces that we. We, we've known, for instance, that there have, there has been a. Non-representation in STEM classes, for example, or STEM opportunities over that we offer at, at Madison College. So we are intentionally focusing and looking for students, recruiting, providing information, doing parent nights, providing those. When appropriately so, those students move into the very area that we are giving more information, then it becomes a deficit in the class that they left.
Mm-hmm. But inappropriately.
Appropriate, because we, but while we, we, we value our and celebrate our diversity, there, there are still. Only so many students across, across all of our demographic, demographic lines. So I, I just think it's a long-winded way of saying. We seem to, I don't know if it's a mathematical way of actually telling the story, is it more of a, of a student experience way of telling the story in a qualitative way? And I, you didn't just say qualitative, because John was over there and loves quality, but it's part of it, right? It, it, he's, you know, that's right, it's, it is, we have to just think of.
And I think there's, there's both of that. I think having a qualitative story is important. And I also think, though, ensuring that we haven't created barriers to access, because I think that's where the mathematics does come in. If there's students who are seeking to enroll but are turned away, then we've put in a prohibition from them pursuing something that would be of interest. So maybe the percentages, students who wish to pursue this.
Right, were accommodated. I think, I think quantitative, to your point, is a little, the quantitative is measuring maybe the wrong. Aspect, and wrong as in, we could do a better job articulating, not you gave us the wrong indicators, because we approved all of these. But I think to that point too, just to add, I think, I remember talking about this. And really hemming and hawing over the language of this top-level policy. And I think a big thing that we wanted students to walk away with was a very personal, non-shamed relationship with their idea of health for themselves. And physical education and achievement for them, like it's not about the number on the scale, it's about how I feel, it's about how healthy I feel, it's about my mental health. And I think, I don't know if that's through like a climate survey, I don't know, it's hard that there's not like a standardized health test. Or, or something like that, you know, outside of, you know, the, like biology, but like, I think we're missing that piece too in terms of like. How connected do students feel to their own health as opposed to just like showing up to a PE class?
And this is a no way to take away from the great work that's going on and, and even the monitoring report. This is monitoring exactly what we've asked to have monitored. This is, I think, more of a, a conversation that's sitting here with a. What are, what are we trying to chart for our students? What's the thought?
Yeah, I think we inadvertently created a structure where these different elective categories are pulling against each other. And seeing success in one causes you to see, you know, reasonable progress not met in another. And I, when I'm reading these monitoring reports, the things that I like to think about is, is this data I'm looking at, does it, is it useful to me? Is it telling me something that I think is elucidating something I, I need to know? And I just, I don't think this is doing that, because we, we were using data in a way that's not all that valuable. But the thing that was the most valuable thing I heard today was what you were talking about, about expanding the course offerings at the middle school level. So I mean, when I think about what I want to know, it's that. It's whether the course offerings we're giving are matching student interests, and I don't know if that, that's a climate survey thing, or if it's just using some other. Student groups to communicate feedback, or just some way to know that there's a connection between the students and the leadership in terms of what course offerings are. And I say this admittedly, probably the biggest, you know, data hound, I like the data a lot, not everything can be measured statistically. So I don't think we always need to have that quantitative data in all of our monitoring.
And I think, you know, this is again, we're sitting here at the board table, we aren't in the best position to know how and what to monitor and how to measure, and, and what, what evidence exists that we would want to see. I think, though, that's where we, the story that, with the information that we're hearing outside of the report is really valuable. That's the, so that's the part that I think, I want to honor that, that, that work is huge, and we've maybe asked for something. Else inadvertently, and I think that's what, how do we, how do we pull that information into a monitoring report? How can we highlight that in a better way? I've been, am I?
Yeah, I mean, I'm assuming we're going to have a conversation after the performing arts results policy as well, so I don't have it all at once. But I like what you said earlier, I've been kind of chewing on it about, you know, if we provide, if we encourage. Basically, what I heard was if we encourage students to elect for something, and then we don't have space for them to do it. Then what have we done as student agency in that moment? You know, we've kind of untaught that, and what I keep, what I just started kind of coming back to around. This results policy, but maybe some other ones as well is, you know, the question for me is, how well are we providing students with the opportunities to enact what they want to do? And, you know, you've got to provide the opportunities to do what they want at high levels first. And then you've got to provide enough of those opportunities so that they can adapt. You know, there's going to be a point in life where they apply for very competitive things, and they're not all going to make it, that's too bad. But like, middle school and even the beginnings of high school, you want them to learn how to enact what they want to do. And kind of setting them up to get turned down, so really, I really kind of, when you were saying that earlier, I was like, oh, yeah. And I've got my, the rest of my comments for the performing arts one.
Okay, so since we don't want to have it all at one time, I mean, my goodness, why keep all of it in just physical? Oh, do we want to vote on this one and then move on to creative performing arts? We have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It has been approved and presented, thank you.
Thank you. So I think, I don't, I can just say ditto to purpose, performing arts with, with just different data trends on the, on the backend. Do we freeze up? Gloria, you have access up here.
So thank you, Joe, I think you've given a lovely segue to this in terms of what's happening and, and seeing. I appreciate that we're presenting two results policies that both tie in enrollment on the same night, so you can see the really clear connection between the two. And then given the case that we're, that we're seeing for our students here. So in terms of creative and performing arts. We have one indicator here that's simply about increasing enrollment in creative and performing arts. So this really comes down to music and art, maybe gender difference from the. From the middle school and the high school that we're focused in on. So when we look at that data set, while the data, the indicator talks about six twelve, it's helpful sometimes to break it down, middle school and high school, just because their schedule, their court guide is vastly different. And what their schedule allows, so it's a bit different as well. So overall, we do see an increase of all students six twelve enrolling in creative and performing arts. We break this down, middle school and high school, we see the high school added more sections of music and art last year, and they saw an increase for their students overall. They also saw an increase for nearly all of their focus groups at the high school as well. So the high school numbers for creative and performing arts for all students and all but one of their focus groups did increase from twenty-two to twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four. Where we see the converse, though, is for middle school. So we recognize that at middle school, we added six section of fitness for life. We also added a class called Growing Green at Banjerrid based on student voice as well. Students only have so many hours in the day, so students are in fitness for life at middle school or growing green, they're not in art or music. So that, where we see the indicator one A, our focus group students accessing music and art at the middle school level did decrease. Year over year, what we do see, though, in terms of percentages, we still have ninety percent of our middle school students accessing music and arts regularly. So even though we don't, didn't increase that percentage quite enough from twenty-two, twenty-three to twenty-three, twenty-four. So to change that green, we still do have a high percent of our students that are accessing, that are accessing creative and performing arts. At the high school level, we did want to dig into, to understand the focus groups that did not see an increase. It was our African-American students had a higher participation rate in twenty-two, twenty-three than twenty-three, twenty-four. But digging into that data, we recognized there was a difference of thirteen students, several of those students are now in the STEM Academy. So they are named as Bronerie High School students, but actually don't have a schedule here. We also realized that of those students, many of the students were actually taking two or more, so multiple semesters of music and art. So the pattern, we had more students for taking one semester, and now we have fewer number of students that are taking multiple semesters. Perhaps indicating that they see a trajectory for themselves or really a, a strong interest in, in these areas. So it was, it was important for us to dig into the data to better understand, yes, we see this decrease, what does this mean? We couldn't say all thirteen students are going to tech ed, it was very personalized. Some are in, some are in Abbott, some are in, on the STEM Academy, some are taking other classes in other departments. But overall, has a summary here, yes, we did increase for all students across middle school and high school. We decreased in terms of some of our focus groups, hence the. The yellow check mark here for one A, when we dive into that data, more and much of it is coming from the middle school. And can be tied back to the data that you just saw in regards to physical education and that students accessing those classes instead. At middle school, there's no opportunity for students to leave early or have a release period, so they're somewhere, and they're just making a lot of choices that best suit their own trajectory. And to your point around in terms of student agency, right, and making those, and making those selections. The leadership moves here for two point two point three, very similar to what we saw for two point two point four. The late start Mondays have been invaluable, and for staff who are maybe the only art teacher or one of two art teachers getting to work with each other. K-12 and understand that vertical articulation, similarly with music, has been really, really impactful. We did a survey of staff just last week, and, and very positive responses for that time to collaborate on their standards, instructional planning. And what you're, what you're naming here, and not just the number of students in classes, but the quality of the implementation and the instruction that we're providing to students, and that's really what they're digging into. And then much of the rest of these leadership moves really connect back to what we can offer in terms of student voice. How we make sure that students are informing what goes in the course guide, or we get that feedback from students on. Uh, we make sure that students are informing what goes in the course guide, or we get that feedback from students on how we understand and help them to think about their academic and career planning and their personalized goal. As they're making a four-year plan in high school, how do they understand um kind of their own course trajectory? Making sure the work that we're doing with the counselor that you heard from earlier also supports that all, six twelve. So, what questions do you have about creative and performing arts?
I have two questions. Um, one, when you said ninety percent of our middle schoolers are accessing creative and performing arts. Um, and then when I look at kind of focus groups and overall enrollment, it's not ninety percent. So can you talk a little bit more about, is it the high school numbers that are kind of balancing that out? Or is the access including things that aren't formal curriculum?
Yeah, so it is, it is the high school that's balancing, okay, check that out. So at the middle school level, we have ninety percent of all middle school students accessing creative and performing arts. I think scored about fifty four point four seven percent.
Okay.
And that's the results of them in other elective areas. So because we report six twelve, the percentage is getting a little bit.
Um, my second question, and this is uh maybe a bit in in the gray, but I've always looked at the results policies when it comes to the um like not rating that we give it, the certification of achieving reasonable progress. I'm trying to understand how you got all the way to reasonable progress not yet achieved. So I've kind of done an average game with this, and it's hard because there's only two indicators. But to me, one was achieved and one was not yet achieved. So that averages out to achieving reasonable progress with exceptions in in my head. And again, it's better when there are more indicators, but I was just wondering your reasoning for going with reasonable progress not yet achieved.
Yeah, that was great. I, I think, I think if anything with with leadership moves, I, we have such a high expectation for uh being far more than average. And in looking at, if you purely looked at it through the lens of a number count, which I think is what we're actually trying to stray away from purely through that lens, then we were average at best. And that's not, I can't say we are the model for excellence and the average. And, you know, I, I also, I also know that, you know, pers- percentage wise, it would be the, be the exception, but I think we have some philosophical expects, uh exceptions that we actually have to talk about, and I, and I really wanted that to guide our conversation today. You know, and I'll, I'll utilize utilize one of the statements that that John made around student agency. Yeah, if a student is advocating for a specific experience in their choice and their course selection, am I, are we doing, and in service by saying no to almost meet this quote, I need you to take this class over here, that kind of flies in the face of the very agency that we, that we, that we said. And so I'm really, I'm, I'm actually at the table coming appropriately struggling, that's why we do continue to improve plans with, how do we advocate student agency and how do we look at this in a, in probably a different way? If we were looking at it with different lens around, have we increased the number of opportunities for our students? Then I'd be put it all the way up to the top, because yes, we have. If we're purely looking at yes, no, that this number, this percentage of students meet, then I can't come in the board and say yes, purely through that lens.
So I think that's the problem with these, the way we've set up these results monitoring reports, we're not actually monitoring because of exactly what you said.
Well, and it's partially, I think, the ver- I mean, I am, I reread the big, the policy of this over and over, and both of them are the same. Expect all students will access, not will have access to. There's a distinction there, right? The policy is written to demand, the students will do, will take, not just have available to them. And so I think this is a piece for us as a board then too, that you are responding to the way that the policy has been written. Expecting to see numbers of who is accessing. I also want to lift up kind of the backend of the policy, especially with physical education, about getting to see the standards, the curriculum, that's hugely valuable. And to elevate the leadership rules that you all surfaced in the beginning of this, I think does lift up the second half of both of these policies about, you know, the more intangible or the more qualitative aspects of this. But I think this is a piece as a board that the policy as written, I think, is kind of pigeonholing this idea of students must take. And we all seem to kind of philosophically agree, there's some gray area there in terms of access to, but then providing agency for students to choose paths.
Yeah, I think I struggle with this saying reasonable expectations not yet achieved because there's so much other work that's going on with this, but this is the policy we wrote. And I'm struggling also with, I think we have, they will and have access to. I think we have access to is what we want to ensure. And I think we also want to make sure that um that there, that students can see themselves in these different areas. And that there's not any um, any barriers that are, you know, that in excess of just mere space. And I think, how do we capture that? Like Corby's got a comment. Corby?
Thank you, Joe. Uh, um, what I wanted to say, I really appreciate how this data was collected. Uh, when we were looking at students not participating, and this was, this is one of the first times where I saw uh the closest thing to what I see as a cohort type of data collection, where you did, went that extra mile to see why students who weren't included in this, in this data collection were not included. And I, I think uh that approach, if we use that approach uh for, for most or all of the data that we're collecting, I think we're gonna get even closer to that story that we're trying to to see and figure out. Because those, I think you said thirteen students, you gave a explanation of why they, they were, weren't participating in in uh arts anymore. And I think that explanation will tell the story that we're looking to see or hear, I should say.
Thanks, Corby. So do we have any questions about the content of the report, you know, other than our philosophical board questions at this point? John, I feel like you are on the fence about saying something. What do you?
I'm thinking if it's a question or a comment for a discussion after. I don't think I have any questions. I think I would say that collecting this and woman data is, I think it could, you know, I, you know, I'm not a data person. But I think this is a good first step. I mean, you gotta know where your blind spots are. So I don't think that getting, walking away from this is the, is gonna be the right option. I think this is set one of those baselines for us to say, now, how can we think about policy? Because there's a finite number of students, they can't do all the things. Um, but we do want to focus more on student agency unless I'm shoving students around or shuffling them, shuffling them with that. So I don't know that I have any questions about the report as it's presented. I think I have more comments for us as we discuss.
Um, so at this point, is there a motion to accept the um report as presented?
I, I, I have a quick question. I'm sorry. If we just, I still disagree with the rating, can we still vote to take it into discussion? You're saying as presented?
Just gonna bring it in, open discussion, and then we can have a motion to um. Okay, so we have a motion from Joe?
Yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Nicole. Okay, so for our discussion then, um, I mean, I think we have a couple of things. What are we trying to measure? And where does this fall in the compliance?
Yeah, I mean, I'll be, I'll start us off and I'll say, I honestly don't know what the difference is between reasonable progress not yet achieved and reasonable progress achieved with exceptions. I don't have a good understanding of uh what the difference is between those. And I had a different memory of our workshop of what we had coming out of that. I thought we had agreed to get rid of the with exceptions one and just have a more simplistic. So now I'm left with, I don't really understand what the difference is.
I think we replaced the failed, reasonable progress failed with reasonable progress not yet achieved. But I'm, I'm with you, Joe. As much as I love that our superintendent drives to excellence, I have trouble saying reasonable progress equals Dr. Clarity's definition of excellence. Only because excellence is above reasonable progress. And so I actually have a big problem with that definition because I don't know what reasonable progress is if we're gonna define this as the most excellent school in Wisconsin. It, it, I want, I want us to be that, but this, I don't think this is reasonable progress not yet achieved. Based on the way we've measured every other monitoring report. And I, I, it's not gonna make me lose sleep voting for it at this level. It does make me question that I don't understand this from the brick out.
I feel like this rubric is so uh insufficient for the error, not this rubric, I feel like what we've asked to be monitored just doesn't meet, it doesn't fall into a reasonable progress metric. What are we?
That's a very good point, because these are objective standards. Like, we have a, we have a criteria and you either meet it or you don't. So that's why I'm struggling with a framework that's like, has two different middle ground gray area wishy washy, when it's subjective standards.
Especially, and when growth cannot be consistently achieved just by virtue of a closed set of.
But again, but how we're talking about even growth. So we have these two things that are battling. The way we're defining it and the way we're tending to measure, which we have issue kind of with both. And then they, they kind of rub up against each other even, so.
I think that we're trying to get at things other than what we've asked for. Um, you know, like I would be very much more interested in an indicator around um whether or not students have access, are able to, they're able to like pursue the things that they don't pursue. Not necessarily the enrollment numbers, but I still think that's a good thing to start asking questions around. I'm kind of losing my train of thought here. I, I have a number of thoughts about what Nicole was saying as far as their rubric goes. It does seem pretty clear to me, um, you know, we've got, I think, three options, right? Reasonable expectations and math, um, achievement with exceptions, and then not yet achieved instead of outright failing.
I was gonna kind of piggyback on what you said. I think that when we're looking at the enrollment numbers, that, after I said there's no point for them, in my opinion, I feel like there's one point for them, in my opinion. If we were looking at this as a baseline, um, and we were seeing that suddenly one of our focus groups went to like ten percent, now that we have kind of a baseline established, I would be curious why, what type of, you know, potential barrier or um perception was keeping a certain focus group from feeling like this was something that they had access to?
Or are they all taking advanced math? I wish, and are we all gonna lose sleep over that? Exactly.
I mean, I would like to know more. I think this is really more of a point of uh enrollment percentage would raise a red flag, but it's not what I want monitored.
Yes.
So.
Does that make sense?
I think the next thing.
Yeah.
Yes, so if we got to something where it's like, okay, we've had a big drop in enrollment, that to me is not a metric that I care about except for the underlying reason.
Which, which we got with this.
That seems to be uh advocating for kind of what I've talked about with data before, which is just setting a benchmark. And saying this is the minimum that we expect to see in this category, and that wouldn't be the only indicator. Because I, I really agree with what John said about looking at student agency.
Yes.
But maybe without losing the uh, the data portion of this, just say that our expected, our expectation is X percentage in each of these categories.
But could it even be our expectation is X percentage, and if it falls below that, it's not necessarily non-compliant. It then is a, an inquiry, it triggers more of an inquiry into, go ahead, John. Do you see, I mean, do you see, like, I don't even know that that's a, a cutoff is even still somewhat arbitrary.
And I think you're still monitoring that, if you want to see it even as this jumping off point. So I think that's still there. What I was gonna say is the things that I'm more interested in are like something along the lines of the percentage of students that were able to get their first choice in their electives.
At the middle school, that's for sure, they have to rank their choices for electives, so that, yeah.
And then also looking at um, how many of our students meet some sort of generally accepted guideline around the breadth of their study, that they're not siloing in. Even in STEM, they're not siloing there, that they're meeting some sort of breadth requirement. Um, so that we can see that they're experiencing the different things that we have to offer. That's the liberal arts instructor in me, wanting that out there, because it's, this is, this is a good age to be doing that. Um, and that will prepare them in interesting ways. Those to me are more valuable indicators of sheer enrollment numbers. I'm sure there are a lot of other ways to do it that are even more wishy washy. But that, that, those sorts of things would be important to me. One of the other things, I think that this pushes us to have really interesting conversations about when we say like have access to or participate in creative or performing arts. For example, uh, state California last year mandated and funded that all public schools have to teach creative and performing arts provided. Um, which is a far cry from where we are in Wisconsin. I think the same time I saw that news, I saw something about how Wisconsin spends like eighteen cents per capita on the arts, finishing like dead last in all states. And that's, that's really a profound difference. So one of the conversations I know from people that I know in California is, well, you can't necessarily throw a bunch of extra classes out there required underneath this requirement, because you have a finite number of students and hours in the day. But what they're starting to look at is how can we integrate those arts into other classes in ways that will give our students the real experiences that they need or to meet this requirement, but also to like be enriched and then maybe pursue an interest. So I think that, you know, having enrollment, you know, like indicator is a dead end for us, really allows us to have some of those creative conversations about like, what does it mean to maybe integrate arts into other areas of the curriculum in a meaningful way for students, K twelve all the way up, um, so that they can be exposed to it and then pursue their interests. You know, and maybe even if they have to kill two birds with one stone sort of.
Which, to me, comes back to the back half of our policy. Half of this policy talks about the curricular experiences and the skills and knowledge students are getting. And so I'm realizing too, that with indicators and having this obsession that we've kind of been thought to have as a board about quantitative information, we are literally focusing on the first part of this policy entirely. And again, to come back then to what we got from standards and curriculum information for PE, that there's spaces, I think, for some of the things you're alluding to too, let's talk about what the experiences are that feels more qualitative, but that addresses the back half of what we're expecting to understand is what are students learning for skills and knowledge through these courses?
I don't wanna build up that because we've been, we're calling back to some of our conversations when we first set out on this process. And I think that that's useful. But we also, like, you know, I very much oppose purely quantitative things from the outset. I think I wasted hours of people's time where I set myself arguing for more qualitative things. And what I think though is important is that we've got this quantitative data, this is our first step. We knew going through this the first time that it would be a first step. And now we're asking, what sorts of other things do we really want to get at that's the meat of the matter? This is exactly where we thought we would be when we laid it out, and we were doing exactly what we thought we would do. I really don't want to throw the quantitative stuff away and say that we're pursuing a new direction. I think that we are rightly saying, let's, okay, we've got this down, this can raise some red flags if we need to. But, and it'll force us to make some uh, some weird decisions if we only look at this. Now what is the next thing we look at? Uh, but I don't think that we necessarily say, you know, these are the next indicators that we want. I think that we say, okay, you know, we're open to more. Um, and then, you know, the professionals are gonna be the ones that come back and say, so when they clarify they're more or different. What was that? It'd be different or you don't want more, right? I mean, I don't think we need more. I don't want to, you know, like, like Mary said earlier, like, there are red flags that could come up with the enrollment numbers. I'm assuming that you're always gonna be tracking that, that's just part of your job, like, I don't know if that's something the board would require, would you want more to add on to that? Uh, or we just want different with the assumption that that's still there, operating at the administrative level.
Can I make a comment? I mean, the way I look at it, being newer to this, is what, what indicators will actually help tell the story? Because as in, as a newer board member looking at these numbers, I agree, it's like, I see these percentages, how's that telling the story that they explain it literally to their leadership? That's where the magic's happening, where we're making sure we have diversified course options, and students are interested in getting input. That is the goal. How are we extending that offering in a way that students are super excited to take advantage of it? Reaching their lives, their, their student lives as a result. But the indicator we have is not telling us that story at all. We're not, and I don't know, maybe it's a component, but maybe we should dig into this a little. We're not, and I don't know, maybe it's a component, but maybe we should dig into this a little bit, because there's value that's starting to play a role. It's what other indicators can be added, if at all. What exists out there that actually help tell that story so that we do this? It's not just, oh, this percentage decreased or slightly decreased. We're either doing a good job or not, it's not telling the story, it's telling the stories. There's much more than that, it's, well, I don't know the answer, so I love. I love putting it back on you guys, what other indicators should exist to actually tell your story? All the hard work you guys are doing and all the change that is happening? How can we translate that indicators that we're voting on? So that when we do it, it's clear to the public that's tuning in that, oh, you know, a lot of good is happening. Because I was thinking the eyes of like, our parents just listening to the meeting and saying, oh, they're proving this percentage increase in this focus group. What does that mean to you? Is that making them feel like the school's really going in the right direction with this specific policy?
However, if everyone listened to Amy's presentation about this. Like, that's a reference of the indicators to match the presentation almost, because that captured what I would want to see. If there was a decrease in enrollment, that there was an inquiry into why. And there's, you know, that, that's the type, that's the story that I think the.
They were trying to tell.
Yeah, so this is where I also have been struggling back to Nicole's point. Saying this didn't meet reasonable progress, except the story around this.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe it's like the uh, the policy failed to capture reasonable progress. And maybe that's actually, I feel like our policy failed to capture reasonable progress that's been created, but you know, go ahead, John.
Um, I disagree, I think that, you know, as it's presented, like. I, I think that, you know, if I'm just looking at the qual, the quantitative data at the high school. We didn't do what we said we were gonna do. Now, we might have said the wrong things. But if we're holding ourselves accountable as a board. We didn't do that, we didn't do those things. And so I think that's fair. Um, do I think that's a bad thing? No, sometimes failing to do something is a good thing, that's what education is. So I think that we take this as a, we didn't do it, and that's a good thing.
I was waiting for Joe to say this, I knew this would be coming.
I was about to agree with John, and, because I actually think that the big risk is. I think anytime we, we've set these objective indicators. And I think anytime we fail to meet them, we could come up with a good. Explanation for why that data doesn't tell the story that we think we're seeing when we're looking. But that kind of undermines the whole process of relying on objective indicators to, to measure compliance with a policy. Which is this, the governance model that we've chosen.
So then I would like to jump on the Joe bandwagon and say, get ru, get rid of this with exceptions thing. Because it's incredibly confusing, I don't understand why it's here. Because I've been using this right, wrong, or indifferent as a one, two, three model. And so in, you have two indicators, the first one is one, because it's green. The second one is a two, because it's yellow. You map those together and average them, and it ends up being a one point five, which means that middle point. I don't understand the rubric. And I'm struggling, again, I don't, I don't mind passing this, let me finish my comments. I don't mind passing this, but I don't understand the with exceptions. Because to me, the majority of these indicators were met. So that to me means you are achieving reasonable progress with some exceptions. If this doesn't mean that, I don't understand what that thing is there for.
So I think this is just one of those um. Result policies that has so few, like, we had a result policy with seventy.
I agree, that makes a point.
Where it would make more sense.
So maybe we take this out of the rubric, if it doesn't have excellent indicators? Go ahead, John.
So I think differently, I think this is one of those instances. Where like, you and I are just, I think there's a reason we're on opposite side of the table tonight. I, I, like, I think applying math to this is not the way to go. Like, it's a yellow light, red light, green light thing to me, like.
So what did you call this yellow light?
What was that?
I, I agree, red, yellow, green, right? You, you have one indicator that's green and one indicator that's yellow.
Yeah.
So that means somewhere between green and yellow, you think it's a red?
No, no, there's a red, the red is that we're not meeting expectations yet. The yellow is the with exceptions, and the green is that we met expectations. Um, and I think that it's that way, because that's how it should guide our discussion. If we're meeting it with expectations or with exceptions, that's yellow light. You're gonna proceed through the intersection slowly and carefully, alright? If it's not meeting expectations, that's kind of what we just had half the night, it's a red light, this thing isn't working. We've gotta stop, we've gotta do something differently. Um, we can try to run that red light, if it's turning yellow, if it's yellow turning red at our own risk. But I, I just hesitate to kind of average it out, to me, these make sense. And I think when we get into the other result policies or some of the other things where there's more gray area, particularly if we're introducing more qualitative data. We're gonna want those with exceptions, because we're gonna have qualitative reasons that are exceptional. That force us to say like, hey, this didn't meet it, but there were exceptions that are worth considering.
So I, I, I love the analogy. So then I'm gonna sort of be on this side of the table for a moment, because I think the discussion then is. Your interpretation, I might hear you say that in your mind, this policy tonight is a yellow light. We're feeling some cautionary things?
A red light.
It is a red light too, okay, that's the clarification I need to understand, okay.
I think that, for me, when we have the red line, that is to us, especially when we've done a year, you know, compilation, we just did that in December. We looked at our policies, we kind of hit what was expectations, what had exceptions, what didn't meet expectations. The didn't meet expectations is our red flag, for whatever reason. So whereas I think the policy is a problem here. The red flag is a marker for us to come back and revisit.
But to Nicole's point, there's no red, there's no red on this.
So I mean, I, so I kind of that's the thing, like, there's nothing red on here.
If you actually look at the piece of paper. There are, and, and I'm just saying this because I understand red, yellow, and green. Literally, we work for it as a framework of big emotions in my house every single night at dinner. And I love it, I love it. But if you look at the lines, there are eight lines. Four of them are green and four of them are yellow. There are no, and, and call them red, call the yellows red if you want to, right? Four are passing and four are failing. That is literally the definition of in the middle is yellow. And so all I'm saying is, like, if, if you use your own metaphor, it's not red, it's yellow. And at the end of the day, I think we all agree that we need better indicators to really support the work that's going on. And what we give a crap about students experiencing and learning and feeling. And so I think we're aligned, it just still doesn't quite make sense to me.
Can we just say, is there's a spot for comments, I think? Yeah, uh, oh wait, I guess it's an exception.
Can I just, there's no math in my analogy. At all. If there are eight lights and half of them are green and half of them are red, you still don't get to go through all eight lights. It's not averaged out to yellow, and I just go fast enough, I'll make it. Like, what I'm saying here though is, is maybe they should have been colored red, I don't care.
You know, I do think.
I just want to keep the exceptions in our model.
Yeah.
That's what I'm reacting to.
And I think, let's say that there were um, some indicators that we weighted more heavily. I mean, I don't think that each indicator is necessarily carries the simply.
I think that's the right conversation to have, like, take this one aside. What we're doing. Like, what we're, what we're doing here, at least in my opinion, I think every conversation everyone's brought up is the right conversation to have. Not to minimize anybody's points. I think it's, we're, we're becoming a little inconsistent, in my mind, or at least I'm getting a little inconsistent of like. We've never before said in any of the previous things, we missed things and we've passed it as achieving reasonable progress with exceptions. I can go back and show you the ones we did. So the metaphor, if, you know, some of the lights are red, you're not going through any, we have flown in the face of that. So I think the question is, there needs to be a little more rigor around the rubric of like, they're also not all evenly weighted, Nicole. So if the one that's most important to us gets a red, it is a red.
If the rest are all green.
Exactly, this is, yeah, I think that's the right conversation.
And I think for this, I'm less concerned about what we um, what we certify it as, probably honestly, because I don't feel like it is accomplishing what we want. To that end, I would be on this side of the table that it didn't, we've approved this policy. We approve these indicators, based on our approval, it isn't meeting expectations. And the only reason I would go with that is to red flag it, because it needs, we need to circle that.
Yeah, to Joe's point, it's like, as this stands, it's a second to, I think, can work with indicators to be better objective overseers of, are we. Are we doing what we're setting for the chief? I don't think this does, in that respect. But this is where we're at, so we have to go on, I get that. But this is a good one.
So that's where I think the red flag. Helps, I like that. I'm um, I'm open to additional conversation about this, but we've had a point where we think, I think we're all in agreement on the big picture here.
I think the conversation that still needs to be had isn't specific to this one.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, yeah, I agree with that. So with that, we have a motion and a second to approve as presented. All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Me opposed? Okay, we have officially approved it as presented, but with a lot of caveats. To um, to the policy itself and to future work. And I think this is something that we would like to, I think this conversation needs to be maybe a bigger conversation. So that's something that we can work with Dr. Clardy on and maybe figuring out how do we move this forward to ensure that. Our work is being done appropriately and that we're setting the right uh, course for admin.
So thank you for the conversation, I just quickly want to answer uh, Nicole's final question, I think that I. It was kind of just hanging out there about the considerations when we went. When we chose to go uh, not meaning appropriate growth. Was, you know, are there some of that factor heavy that, you know, when we talked about this from the, from a team perspective, uh, which, which, which we do. And sometimes I make a decision with the team, sometimes I make a decision. That was like, the case that was brought up was, if you look at it from the perspective of. Did more students perform, or did more students participate in the performing arts? The answer was yes. And did more students perform or uh, participate in physical education? The answer was yes. My point was, what if you didn't take our equity statement? And say, or now what about our focus groups? That, that's when it actually became the fifty fifty. But overall, yes, more students did participate in each of those categories. I also quickly just brought up our graduation requirements, which I opened this a little bit, because I, we're gonna have to come at this a lot. Physical education and health, which is on one monitoring board, is a graduation requirement. Our performing arts is a graduation option. So of course you're gonna have more students that must, because they have to go, they have to take physical education and health. And for our performing arts, it's one of, in a credit option of things that you can take. To fulfill your additional eight, I think it's eight point five, uh, eight point five credits. So there, even these two don't hold the same weight, because once they get across the stage, one is a student agency in choice.
And I think that probably should be captured somehow in the different indicators for each policy. We want to make sure that every, yeah, there, there's a lot, I think that um. I think the, I think the board has kind of expressed. A consensus and thoughts. How that is, you know, how we move forward. We're very glad you are all here to move that forward, because we do not know. But we have, yeah, we have the start of a conversation and we'll figure out how we can come back, because I think this has been brewing. Joe, this has been brewing since we approved the indicators.
You finally get your due.
So much, Amy, we're well done.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright. We'll go ahead?
Yes, okay. And so go back to eight point, one point three, so now we're back kind of, back in order. Thank you.
Just gonna release a couple underwriters of the.
Yeah. I mean, you're all free to stay.
Yes.
Alright, um, next we want to do the indicators for uh. Two, I would say two new subpolicies that were added to the overall policy of, of OE eight. And then we're gonna present OE ten as a little bit differently, because. That was actually an inclusion of language within an already existing policy as compared to writing a whole new, a whole new subpolicy. Okay, so beginning with uh, eight point one three and eight point one four, uh, I want to. Provide a little insight into our thinking with the indicators that are going to be proposed to the, to the Board of Education and open it up for. Uh, discussion. There we go. So I think about, I'm just gonna read the first one, the eight point one three, which will be new to our public. Uh, the superintendent wants to show the board is appropriately including effectively represented in district communications. Uh, we began with a proposed interpretation that really wanted to focus and lean in, rightfully so, that of the board's values that. Uh, we have consistent, clear and accurate coverage of the Board of Education's work to the public in our, in all of our district, district communications. And the terms that we pulled out were more phrases than terms. Um, that we, that we brought to life were appropriately included to include uh, consistent presence in district communications and effectively represented. Uh, we wanted to ensure that uh, it's, it's the descriptions are accurate. They're linked directly to student results and also the operations, so to be results policies and OE, and OE policies. And that communication to the relation board are used to advance the reader's understanding of the great work our Board of Education does. Um, and so that's how we were using those, those two terms. As we get into the indicators proposed themselves, uh, we'll begin with indicator one. Uh, where our, our goal is to ensure that the communications are in multiple platforms, including our, and we just gave some examples of the VAC website, social media, and district newsletter. And in our annual reports that are uh, both in our academic report as well as the budget and annual report. And any other relevant commu, uh, publications. I didn't want to narrow it so far in that it was only the ones, because we're constantly creating uh, new spaces, you know, you know, the, the podcasts and other mediums. So uh, we wanted to leave that kind of open ended for, for future, future publications. Would it be easier to go indicator by indicator, or you just wanna go one at a time?
Maybe.
It's so long since we did this.
No, maybe, if there's any questions, people will jump in.
Okay. When we looked at indicator three. Uh, we really want to make sure that, you know, and you know how important that our public facing, our documentation and communication is, that we have a. A board perspective on the materials that, that describe. And uh, and for that purposes, uh, we really want the indicators that shows that the intentionality of collaboration between. Uh, to be mostly, mostly myself or representation from the, from the superintendent on the materials that are board. I think we've learned the effectiveness of multiple reads and multiple perspectives. And here's what's being stated and here's how it is I receive it as a, uh. And that always helps to strengthen what we, what we put out to, to, to the public. And I say this, you know, as a, as a fault to mine, notorious for educating speak. And wanting to kind of get away from that as well and making sure that it's community speak and, and word and terms and phrases that are, are very. Uh, clear and meaningful for, for our community, our intended audience to understand. And then finally, in, in settings just like we have today, we want to ensure that all of the uh, work in the today is a great example that coming to life where. Our agenda's presentation and the minutes that uh, are even more frontward facing now are available to the public. And you'll see that in our board recap that we try to have back out within like thirty six hours uh, from the board meeting, front facing. Um, and we've also added a, a space where it also goes to uh, like Co Plus and, and leadership to be, to be placed into our buildings as, as well. So uh, just that, those previous recaps and I, again, I always pretend like there's a thousand people watching, uh, but at least we'll get a thousand eyes. One day. Alright, so I'll pause for a piece.
I have a question about indicator three, but are there any questions about one and two before we get there?
So the question about two.
Now it feels like a little bit more of a process to me. I was just wondering. How? That is evidenced.
So for the evidence for that, I I think we'd be able to. Speak through like I when I do leadership, board leadership meetings, the agenda as a geniums all often put them. Here's some documentation that's gonna go out or some communications getting your out. Here's some, here's, can I get your perspective on it? I'll send an email out that, hey, I'm getting ready. I I want your, I like your eyes on this communication before it goes public. So I'd be able to pull email strands or agenda notes or any of those things where I. I've front loaded that I would like eyes on communication that's that's going out and then obviously it'd be followed up with that communication.
I wonder if. This is an example of something where I'm not normally thinking. That the negative of what you want is the way to focus. Usually I like the positive like that, but I wonder if this is. Easier to do if it's focused on the negative where we, you know, looking for zero instances where we're not consulted. Or is collaborated with in this one? Because if we're looking at all the instances where you do collaborate with us, that's a lot. If we just say, well. Are there any instances where we feel like you didn't? Then it's incumbent on us to kind of report that to collect the data. But that's a little like, I mean, that doesn't really happen.
Well, even in those cases, when I produce evidence, there could be hundreds and sometimes thousands of pieces of evidence. I just put samples of when it when it when it was occurring to show a trend. I don't, I wouldn't do every single time that I that I that I that I did it.
There's indicators on other policies, and I'm gonna have zero examples to prove my point, but where the indicator evidence is basically an a. Another human saying, yeah, I concur because they're the active party that's. A part of that. And so I feel like that's kind of true for us. To your point, John, of any one of us could say. Remember this example, or I would say there's a no, but I think if there are other indicators where it's a third party also validating. That that in fact is a true and accurate indicator. Am I saying that in a way that makes sense?
And I I agree with that because I kind of think one of the, one of the drawbacks of doing the monitoring, the way that we do it is. We create work for work's sake. When really an indicator like this, all we need is exactly what Jen said, and we just all have to like stamp and say yes, and that's good enough for me. And any additional evidence, it's just busy work on the part of it.
Because we know the, I mean, this policy is about us. So I mean, again, to share information for community's sake, I think is one piece, but. I don't need to see the evidence of examples of where we've done this because we're living, we're all living it as part of our role.
Yeah, I mean, even to make it even more formal than that, I I would be more comfortable even if it was something where we, like, I'm not just saying, no. This didn't happen in its regards to me. I would have to like give that to the president, and then the president could say, well, we had one instance, you know.
Why why do you need to give it to the president?
Well, just I just worry about like. When we get to this. Just a bleak worry.
I think there are some indicators that are inherently subjective, like we all might have our a different understanding of what we think it means to be supported or included or to weigh in or collaborated, correct? Whatever that word is. And. That's why I think that would be reflected in how we vote, right? Like if I'm the only one that thinks we weren't adequately collaborated with, then I would be the one vote.
Right. Like I think John, John in his hypothetical would have every right to be like, no, I don't feel like I was consulted or it wasn't collaborative. I I appreciate, I think what John's trying to get at is if that was an underlying issue before, not to bring it up in that moment and to give a heads up. To add, well, maybe, but I I think to your point, John would have every right to say, no, I vote against that.
But not every board member will collaborate on every communication.
And I think that might be where the where you could step in, you two would be like, actually, we had an admin meeting with him. And he did bring that forward with us. So that's great, but maybe we as a board should discuss. If you felt super left out by that, why is that? Do we need to improve our internal communication?
I think I want to make sure that we're not putting the onus on the administration to do our board work. And I I feel like that was actually indicated three in board work, but I. I mean, we're still on two, so I won't jump ahead. But how do we? I mean, I'm I'm kind of, I'm kind of with John on the, is there been an instance where collaboration didn't happen? Is that better?
Which we, the evidence is still to bet. I think by surfacing this, we're sort of alluding to evidence that doesn't create unnecessary busy work. Because we we are this policy.
But the indicator could still stay as it is, and then we're just kind of sharing with admin, we're okay if you just say. There weren't any cases you brought up where we didn't.
Yeah.
Yep, as the evidence, right?
Yeah, because I do like the way the indicator is phrased. I think you should just.
As long as there's the institutional memory that that's the expectation, right? Like, otherwise, we find ourselves five years from now, but maybe a completely different board. Using the same indicator that's now expecting. That's why I'd be more in favor of what John suggested, which is being explicit in the indicator that what we're looking for is proof of a negative, you know?
I I agree with that.
Always process, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. My thoughts.
I don't want to speak out of pocket. I have to come back. Yeah, in I there are other. Policies with aligned indicators that are just what John's talking about. In particular, OE six, if we messed up on an audit or the board is aware of us, you know. Regarding the superintendent's negligence ending up costing us a lawsuit. And there so there are, I think we have three or four other policies where the indicator is what John said, it's the negative, the inverse. It didn't happen. And in turn, you're compliant.
And I I'm almost looking at number two and wondering, there's going to be situations where collaboration just simply is not possible. And really what we're trying to get at is just that communications that go out are accurate and the content is advances a reader's understanding. So maybe it's just that the superintendent has ensured. That the work has ensured that communications. Describe the work of the board to, you know, I don't know, just. Is the collaboration piece the key piece or is the accuracy piece the key piece? Do you know what I'm saying?
Preview. Isn't the preview?
And so I mean, I guess I don't know that there's always going to be a situation where the board is going to preview or that it's even appropriate. If there is something has to go out immediately. I mean, I guess we just want to make sure that it is in it's accurate and that it. Advances the reader's understanding of the board work and that's is that for.
Because I I think we have expressed, like, if our name's gonna be signed to something, we kind of want to see it.
Yeah.
Is it a combo of.
That our name's gonna be assigned assigned to it, but if if it's going to be referencing our work.
But but that might be one in the same, right? And I think what if we added something of like, we'll collaborate to preview unless previously approved. Right? If we've already had communication like that before.
Let's say there's an emergency.
I'm trying to think of an emergency that literally is about board work. Those don't feel inherently, do you know what I'm saying? Like most emergency communications come up.
Release that has to turn around the next.
That's true, I guess.
And it also pretty regularly.
It only has to reference board work.
Yeah.
But also, this is talking, we're all thinking about written communications.
Yeah.
But it's not necessarily limited to just written communications. What if Dr. Clarity is giving an interview to a news station and they ask a question about the board? Does he have to say, hold on, I gotta make a phone call real quick to our board to preview what I'm gonna say in response?
My proposal for number two, I just is that just the superintendent will ensure that. Materials that describe the work of the board are accurate and that the content advances the reader's understanding. But this is where there's a discussion because not everybody, you know, agrees with that. I I'm not sure that the collaboration piece is the key piece. And I'm not sure that the preview piece is the key piece. For me, it's the accurate piece. Go ahead, John.
I think it's similar thing with you. You can usually add references to not just the board, but board work. As well as accuracy and advancing the reader's understanding to the first indicator, which becomes longer. But then, I mean, you really don't even need. Because, am I right, like? To me, the thing is about collaborating to preview.
I think one is saying essentially the district gives the board credit where board credit is due. And two is saying if there's communications that could affect the board, that the board is collaborated with.
Isn't two a big part of why we wrote the.
Yes.
And and I agree that it's not going to be possible in, so I don't want to make it prescriptive work. In every single case, this must happen.
I agree.
But I also don't want to throw the baby out with the bad ones and say we never have to be preview or collaborate.
So to play devil's advocate on what, or a nicer phrase, I'll go with devil's advocate, on what you said, Meredith. If you said it has to be accurate. If I'm admin, if I'm not sure it's accurate, it's now on me to reach out to someone on the board and say, is this accurate?
Yeah, collaboration could be a mechanism to ensure.
Accuracy, right, that's. But if the key is accuracy, there's inherently potential or need for collaboration.
Unless that muddies the water for you, Dr. Clarity, and you don't like that. But it puts the, I mean, you're a smart dude. You're a smart dude.
So if I'm if I'm thinking back to the workshop. For me, accuracy isn't. Isn't what we were talking about. What we were talking about is collaborating and previewing, previewing to ensure like mutual intent. That we're all intending the same thing with that communication or something like that. Because accuracy, we, it's not as important as it is to you.
Accuracy is also extremely subjective. And it's really hard to put a finger on accuracy.
Yeah, it's kind of the, you know, when it's inaccurate.
Yeah.
But let's see, you know, when it's inaccurate because it's not mutual. I don't.
Well, again, to just kind of ours, our, our. What's the word? I haven't had dinner. I'm hungry. The word is, our standard is for is is reasonable person, so. We all may come at this with a little bit different. I still have, you know, my. But I hear everyone else has valid points on on two. Do we want to? Put a pin in two? Do we have a consensus on two? I do have a question about three that I want to surface to.
My opinion on two is if we could somehow qualify what's in there with some standard of. Will will not unreasonably not collaborate or will reasonably, whenever reasonably possible, collaborate. Some sort of. Out to say that it doesn't have to happen in every single instance, but where it is possible, we do expect. Like when appropriate. Yeah, then maybe that's.
And when not possible, if things were inaccurate, then we have another place to draw from. I mean, right?
You just added a when appropriate in there. For me, you can, if you add.
I think the when appropriate.
And if you, then again, this is more about somebody servicing when it doesn't happen. Than Dr. Clarity providing the reams of evidence that it does happen. I'm fine with that.
I like the one appropriate, okay. Okay, so then if we can move to number three, my concern is the Board of Education agendas, the agendas belong to us. So we can't monitor to ensure that we did our job. So I would say that we need to reward number three. My proposal would be the work of the Board of Education in meeting settings is evident in presentations made to the board. And board minutes are available to the public. That would be, but taking out the agendas, that's our responsibility. But when I think presentations, I mean, get more context, so I don't know if I have it worded right. When the district is making presentations to the board, it's about board work. Or that's something is that, I'm not even sure that actually, I don't know that we actually need that indicator, but. I don't mind it either. I I think the agenda still has to come out because that's not.
And one other. One thought that I had about this is in addition to the minutes. There's also, because one of the leadership moves that you already did in response to even our discussion about this was the board meeting summaries. As it is right now, that's not really captured in any indicators, so maybe be broader than just minutes, minutes and summary of board meetings or or minutes or summaries of board meetings or.
If we just add add other relevant publications and meeting materials for the first indicator, does that just cover the third one then?
Yeah, that was that was my question. If if the agendas was coming out, which I, I mean, as you phrase it, it's right, it's the board's agenda, so. Come on yourself, then indicator one, actually.
Right, because even the fact that indicator one says VASD website, that technically covers the summaries.
Yeah.
Like to your point of not trying to itemize and list every possible thing, we've broad sweepingly kind of covered.
So I'm fine, I would.
I love it.
Red line and green.
I can withdraw formally with your indicator three.
Yeah, okay, I think. And then so indicator two, we'll just add the when appropriate to the front end.
And we didn't feel we needed to add reading materials to the indicator one then.
I, boy, I I struggle with that because I think that is.
It's gray about what's.
Add meeting summary because that work is being done.
We feel we don't need to add it.
I don't feel like we need to, and I also don't want to mandate that this is how we always communicate, you know? I I'm more comfortable with a little bit of gray areas, you know, we're capturing it, and that is a really great mechanism to accomplish indicator one. So my. I I think actually, so indicator three has been, that's no longer of the consideration, right? So one and two, as far as the reasonable cursing, that's where we're at. Corby, I'm sorry, have you, do you have any thoughts? I haven't. Okay, you just jump on in if I just talk right over me because I. All right, are we comfortable voting on one and two? Yes.
Well, there's a word for it too.
When appropriate, at the front end, the board and superintendent will collaborate.
Thank you.
John, are you okay with that?
Oh, that's great. That all looks great.
Okay, so we have indicator one and two for OE eight point one, three. Is there a? Motion to accept as modified, as presented and modified? Or is a motion from Nicole, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Jen. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor signify with I. I. Any opposed? Okay, we can move forward to eight point one, three indicators, one and two. Thank you, appreciate that. Okay.
So number eight, eight point one, four, the superintendent will ensure the board is necessary staff and administrative support to successfully meet its government commitments and responsibilities. It's a new sub policy created by the Board of Education. In interpretation, we want to look at that the board always knows that we have personnel resources and the staff capacity. Are essential to support the the board and fulfilling government commitments and responsibilities. And expects the superintendent to budget for develop and supervise such such staff. To fulfill that, we looked at necessary staff and administrative support. And again, I we tried to stay away from being too exact and like the exact number or the. What it what that what that entails, but sufficient in both number and proficiency in require and in reference skills to carry out the support. And then government commitments, we thought it was appropriate to. Align it to Wisconsin legislation of what the role of the role of the board members is to phrase government commitment was, which was she was there.
Yeah. Can I have one? I think we, this is where I had, we approved it as written, but I think the intent was governing commitments, is that?
I was gonna ask if it was government tell or governance.
Governing. So we had our slide, and I think we approved though this, I think inadvertently, and that this is what was included in the minutes. This is how we talked about, did we mean governance? Govern, I mean, in our workshop, it was governing commitments.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Because that's tracks with our policy language for governance.
And the indicator still makes sense.
Totally. I just want to make sure if we're moving forward with this, do we want?
I think it's.
But it seems more like you edit.
Yeah, yeah, it was a typo.
So it was like, so we'll edit.
Wherever there's government, it's governance.
Oh, governance. Or governance.
What did I say, governing? See, this is why, if somebody would take over, just.
I think governing, right?
Yes. Governing, I am. The Jerry.
Okay, I wrote this earlier, and it is governing. It is governing. When I back when I was still thinking clearly.
And the definition still stands.
Yes.
Governing.
Has, John.
No, govern, I N G.
It's government, governing, yeah.
Yeah, well, the board okay with the edit there?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, it's in the policy and the interpretation.
Correct.
Isn't that, I can talk myself into those.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I apologize, go ahead.
It takes us to the two indicators. And our indicator was for the personnel with duties related to supporting the work of the Board of Education. Including but not limited to the executive administrative assistant to the superintendent and the board of education are employed by V S D. Rationale for the indicator one, the. The position of executive administration to the superintendent and the Board of Education is the only. Job title outside of, of course, uh supervising the superintendent where that position is. Directly tied to the Board of Education, so I felt it appropriate to name that position, and again, we, as as I told Laurie, we're not, this is not Laurie. But we want to think about the 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 uh the position. Uh that we have and just, so we know for current and for future budgeting purposes that that. Allocation stays to support uh the 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 board.
Yeah, so this would extend to cover. Um if we had any. Additional resources that say would give. Maybe some advice on any election issues that we would have, it would include them too.
Yes.
But they would, they're used so much more around this, okay.
Correct.
Got it, wait.
Correct. Uh yeah, that's actually where we were thinking about, we get insight on, hey, we have a. The election comes up, let's make sure that we have all of our materials and. Yeah.
I think there's so many people that are supporting the work, and I'm thinking about Dan, you know, the our. You know, and we have Jason Rubio, he's one of the people that I was thinking when we were putting this in here, you know, um there's a lot of different. Areas of support that are coming in, and this is also, I mean, this is a place where we're monitoring um. In order to lift up some great work that's going on too.
Why are you laughing? We're just talking about kids, what's over here.
And then the second indicator, I felt it appropriate to put, uh again, the the board. Of education, uh rightfully and appropriately directly evaluates the superintendent. And uh while the evaluation of the executive assistant was still. Be executed, it needs to be informed by the board because again, that position is directly tied in title. To supporting the board and you want that collaborative effort to understand that the board received that collaboration. Or receive that support in the appropriate way. Yeah.
Sounds cool.
And so uh two indicators and I got out of my habit of writing three because I like three.
So the only thing that I would have said here, maybe I'm always just looking for three, so I, but there's one thing that I think that has been um a great help and that's been. Um Jason has kind of provided the board with access to district technology like Zoom and Canva. Do we want to make sure that that continues when we, so we can utilize? Um I know, and I guess my thought is, you know, the board has access and training to utilize available district technology um in order to provide. So this is where we should have some.
I have no idea.
And does it become? So my thought when you surface that is, does it restrict by simply saying technology, is it? Stat resources, I mean, do, is there a reason to phrase it more broadly, or is it?
Yeah.
You know. Or is, do you kind of get what I'm saying? Like, I'm trying to think of other examples besides technology, but I feel like there's, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know.
Anyway. In order to do our.
Yeah, that comes by us technically being. Employees. Like. Which was again, right, we're thinking about. Employed by the school district too. But they're not really. Were, no, yeah, or not, it's not, yeah, that's fair.
I think the. The fact that we have access, it's important to do our job, to be able to have access to certain resources. I thought of technology because I was playing with Canva today, as you may have noticed. But I I feel like having that called out specifically helps perpetuate that because that way we are building that into our. Think we have access and access to.
Because. So my my question with that is that. The policy itself is purely necessary staff and administrative administrative support. So are you counting administrative support as a technology case?
Well, I guess maybe I'm thinking about how Jason has provided, you know, we get the, you know. Newsletters about technology, um it's been a good resource for how to use things when there've been questions, so he has been, maybe it's just a calling out. Of another role.
Uh huh.
And maybe it's already captured in one.
So.
Well, one doesn't explicitly state.
I think to the extent that it's a whole, it's captured in one.
Yeah.
To the extent that you're calling out technology as a thing, like.
That's a whole different. Yeah.
Like, it's not mentioned in the O E.
Right.
I don't think we can mention it in the indicator.
Right.
Without mentioning it. My, yeah.
Yeah, no, you're right, I think you're right. And maybe it's not a, maybe. Again, it's just, it was in, it was in mind. Um and I kind of thinking about, you know, five years from now, when we're sitting here at the board table, have these things perpetuated or um? Do we want to have a place that helps perpetuate them? Or is it totally irrelevant and unnecessary, and it might be?
I think if it's something that we want to add, I think we would have to add it to the O E.
Mm hmm, I think you're right.
Resources like technology. Um can I just ask another question? Well, I think that indicator two is a good practice. On a good policy, I'm not necessarily sure that it's an indicator. I could be wrong, but it seems again like process. And not really indicator, and I'm wondering if we need to state it as an indicator. Or if it's just something that's like a a policy that goes practice that we just do, like we inform at some point. But I don't know that it's an indicator necessarily.
And my rationale there, you know, was like the the uniqueness of. That position is is the only position that explicitly names. The Board of Education as the person that's receiving the administrative support.
Right, so if I'm looking at this and I'm thinking about how do I monitor this? Then what I want to see is something that actually. Puts the onus on the board to say the board has submitted, you know, its. Input into the evaluation of it, because that's where the information is going.
But the superintendent triggers this, so I kind of disagree. The board wouldn't notice the minute, I think the way it's worded.
If it changed just to the superintendent. Collaborate, has collaborated.
Yep.
I mean, it's almost like.
We're checking that it's happened.
Yeah, as opposed to a. The superintendent has collaborated with the board to inform.
And to your point about process, again, I think there are other indicators that are process based, you know, I. But right, I mean, because there's still this layer of. Well, yeah, but.
No, it's just, it's like the superintendent has done this.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Which for a lot of these, because again, it's about us, I feel like the the tech, the checkbox likelihood is higher with. These because it is directly. We're directly involved in all of this, that we're not a passive entity that needs to wait to receive all of the information about these indicators, we are actively in. So. That doesn't feel strange to me because of the nature of what we're doing.
Yeah, I think that is cool. So then it is a.
Yeah. You did it or you didn't?
Yeah, the superintendent. Worked in collaboration, you could just change works to worked, and then we're done, I think, is that, does that? Doesn't change the meaning of anything other than I think it takes it into a yes, no, measurable.
Uh indicator two under eight point one four, when we get to the word. The third word, the superintendent works, change it to worked, E D.
For the board members who are not here, as we were doing indicator approvals, I would just like you to realize. This is how long it took. For each indicator, when we had O E's with ten indicators, you dodged a bullet on this.
Yeah.
I had forgotten until the first time John said it today that how much of our discussion was around this.
This one process.
I mean.
Tated can be measured. So.
I I had one other comment that I think I heard an explanation for that satisfied me, but I I still just wanted to bring it up, which is that. By naming a specific title, it kind of takes away your flexibility to reassign duties if say. You know, the district grows to a point that the executive assistant, the superintendent is too busy to serve this other role as well, and. You want to reassign it, you'd have to come back and redo indicators, but I think I heard your explanation and it makes sense to me.
Yeah, and also protecting, you know, that you want these to be. Ten, fifteen, twenty year indicators, yeah, so someone else can't come in and say, well, I don't want that.
That makes sense, yeah.
Okay, so um with the change to indicator two, changing works to worked. Um is there a motion to accept the indicators as presented? Motion from Monica, also there a second?
Second.
Second from Joe, all in favor, assuming that there's no additional conversation? All in favor signify with aye, aye? I don't know if I, that was a little vague. Did we all aye? Uh any opposed, signify with nay. Okay, um accepted as presented, thank you so much. And then.
Just, just that one word I gave you. Thank you for, Lauren.
Okay, so then we can move on to the change to O E ten point one.
Correct, so as I opened up with, we were gonna, we wanted to present this in a different fashion because the. Uh while it was a, it's in essence a new policy, it's a word within an existing policy. That 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 created the change. So just for reference, excuse me, uh the word nutritional was added, uh and I think, and I like to thank the Board of Education, and I think our community does. Our community does so well, both in the recognition, the understanding of, you know, we acknowledge physical well being, mental well being, emotional, and nutritional. Play is such a a huge role in in that as well. Um and so for the purposes of this, when we we highlighted in yellow, then we go back and we'll change on just the impacts that it had. Uh some of the existing interpretations, some of the existing uh definitional terms, and then we'll. Uh go deeper into how it impacted the overall uh sub sub policy itself. So just in the interpretation, we. Uh we changed the phrase to reflect their physical and mental well uh well being. Uh originally, I believe mental, only mental well being was there, so we know that nutrition has an impact on both mental and physical. So we wanted to add that perspective, and then the definition for nutritional health. You know, really went through, uh our focus there was not the dictating of, but. Also the teaching of the practices, the mindful consumption of making those appropriate choices. And so we, that was important for, it was information that informed the practice of. Access and access to the balanced balanced diet diet options. All right, moving into. The indicators themselves, um. Yeah, I would say a uniquely complex process of being able to ident- identify. Uh very specifics around, we use the terms U S D A guidelines and standards per nutritional guidelines. And we we want to get far more specific as far as what are we actually saying. Also will be served as a communication to our public, and when we say U S D A guidelines, this is exactly the content we mean. When we say standards for nutritional guidelines, here's exactly what we mean by that. Knowing that those can change, we'll have to be fluid and, you know, what this means, so. Uh for now, we'll turn it over to Chad to talk about uh what this means for foods. Food services and then uh we'll open it up to quick to questions when we get to the individual indicators.
Yeah, thanks, Dr. Clarity, you want, can you put the?
Absolutely.
So.
Next to.
If the purpose is hearing hearing his thought. So uh Dr. Clarity, I both thought, you know, in in partnership with our food nutrition staff. Uh that this was a time we actually wanted to share some example evidence that. Uh we might uh and probably will end up uh um sharing with the board on an annual basis as far as tracking what's going on. Uh with food nutrition, uh and Dr. C, if you want to go to the next slide. Um we have a a way that we can actually share uh some of the exact nutritional information. Uh that we are required um to a lesser extent. Uh supply to uh G P I and then in turn to the federal government. Uh for actually over a million dollars in food reimbursement uh on an annual basis. Uh and I do think uh collecting this information and both sharing it with. The board and in turn, sharing it with what will be um a a high functioning wellness committee. Uh will actually ground the conversations for uh what our students are consuming on a daily basis. Um primarily, but not all all the way through our food nutrition program. Uh we also have things like vending machines in our schools uh that we adhere to uh requirements for, and I do think will help. Uh seed the conversation around um ways we can get better uh with what we do for breakfast, lunch, and after school snack. Uh and uh will actually help, I I think, both through the board work and through um a high functioning wellness committee. Uh will also help us um do a much better job um asking our students and our parents. Uh what they want to see in school lunches. So certainly open to feedback regarding uh both what we wrote for the indicator and. Uh what we believe will be examples of sample evidence uh to kind of get this work off the ground. Uh I also, Dr. Clarity, see this work likely evolving, uh similar to some of the ways uh the conference, the. The conversations we had tonight um around um indicators of policy related to even results policies. Um where this is a, um I think this is a solid starting place. Uh but will certainly be a a place that we can continue to grow, um once we start to get. Is just meeting U S D A guidelines perfect, um and uh likely know, a few years down the road, wants to be. Uh lay the groundwork to prove that the board, which the public that we're doing this as a, you know, as really a baseline.
Thank you, Chad, and so as we look at the indicator itself, you know, the indicator. Just singular is our stance on uh the nutrition department. Uh meeting the guidelines for U S D A and standards for for nutritional guidelines. In this situation, we went ahead and added. What this really means, we don't know that we would keep this on our full indicated. Report, but we felt absent of this information, it wouldn't give clear context of what we're trying to describe in the indicator.
Right.
And so we can always stop it after it said nutritional guidelines, but. Uh I I feel I'm glad and be able to provide a reference to our board and to our community, it's like, okay, what does that mean? Yeah, so the we we can, we can determine to keep it there and. Moving forward, we have for reference in in itself.
Would that be a piece of evidence?
Yeah, or it could just be on top of whatever your evidence.
Absolutely, but but again, the the evidence wouldn't come across, I don't think, until. Next year, so I didn't want to wait wait a full year for for that to come.
This is actually very interesting, I mean, I don't know that I've ever actually.
The point of our conversation and just to your point of elevating, this is super powerful, the district decides to do to grow and expand and. And, you know, be creative with all of this is amazing, but this is super important, I think, for people to understand. Because of, I think, stigma and conversation around school lunch and just having a true, accurate understanding of what we're talking about.
I mean, and these little points are just U S D A standards, this is the minimum requirement they have to meet. Which I think is a good, for for families and parents, I would say is a baseline. Um because there's, we can, as long as we're within the standards, we can certainly improve what the standards, so. Hey, we can take a story on twelve people. But we can certainly take it down to five hundred and still receive the money. Like, no button, and we don't have to bump up against them. We're never gonna go over. Exactly, you can go lower, right, in the metrics that we. In the future evolved to, what's what's actually improved that we're. Providing nutritionally high quality food.
And my apologies, uh leaders, I I didn't highlight number six as yellow, um as I did.
I thought that was new also.
Yeah, that is new, so again, that's that's my apology, I missed the, and that is new language, I know, I'm sorry.
Which is, just, I I appreciate that it encapsulates the entire. Um O E, the policy itself, it isn't just so wrapped up in nutrition piece, but just having this concept of a health and wellness committee that just.
Yeah.
Is a resource of voices. Is a resource of voices for the broad scope with which this whole policy is meant to address.
Which includes mental health.
Yeah, exactly. That's great.
And I think, uh, you know, if you use indicator six as a influence to think about in the indicator five. Let's say, you know, if we can use Juan Carlos as an example, it's like this year, let's try to move our sodium down to eight eight hundred. And and the wellness committee comes up with that, then you know, that maybe that's something we, and again, just an example of how wellness committee can be used to influence another. Stat that we have here.
I have one concern about putting a committee into an indicator. I see the committee as kind of, this is maybe John's process. I think the committee is fantastic. I love that. And I'm almost wondering though, is that your, the mechanism, because what you're ultimately saying is that. Nutrition options are informed by input from staff, students, and parents. And then because there may be a point where we don't necessarily want to. Solidify a committee and the only way that a.
We might send out a survey.
Yeah.
That's a great.
So while I think the committee being developed, maintained, and utilized is going to be evidence to support. Six, it may not be what we want to be measuring. We really just want to know that options have been informed by staff, student, and parent input. Is that?
Dr. C, I really like that.
So that would just. That would be a removal of indicator six?
No, it would just be, it would be um nutrition options are informed. Um, by staff, by input from staff, students, and parents.
Instead of the committee.
Yeah.
So, okay.
So really. The committee would be your evidence.
Yes. Uh, but it doesn't tie you to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So nutrition options are informed by input from staff, students, and parents.
Yes. Which is like, we don't demand the advisory groups, but that's been a way that you have elevated other indicators. Through using advisory groups, right, in parallel situation.
Okay, I want to show you. Lori, did you capture the sentence?
I like all of this. This is fantastic. Um, that once explains why I can't get Coca-Cola on here. It's been frustrating for me, but now I get it. Apparently, it's the federal government's rather than not just you guys.
Why would it be a way to complete the story?
Yeah. But um also, I think this is a really powerful thing to think back and maybe go back to the students that came presented from. Um. Badger Ridge, uh, the the student government there that came presented on this, and several of us sat down and had lunch with them. And um, and kind of listened to them talk about their concerns around lunch. And to kind of be able to say, hey, like, this is something that maybe wasn't on our radar. Until um, you know, they started advocating for it. And now there's a very real policy. Language implemented there. It's not just a thing that's going to happen once and then everybody go home, but it's an ongoing commitment. And they can be able to go back and show them what they've been able to do. Powerful reaffirmation of of student voice.
It's so true.
Be sure that the kids that came here to speak and advocate, as I understand, did a couple of years in a row. Or they came a couple of times?
With last year for sure, because we.
Sure, like they did two years in a row. One year they were, one year they mentioned this, the second year they came with like a whole. Like database presentation around student.
They just rose their mouth, I remember one day. I could tell of, I could tell of the student council.
Hey, this is, this is. Was achieved.
For the entire district.
Yeah, that now board policy.
Absolutely.
So are we comfortable with the removal of the committee in the indicators and otherwise as presented? Was there any?
I want to say thank, I think this is such a great start, so. This is awesome um to see, and I'm excited to see how it evolves, because all this is, right, everything we do is continuous. Continues the permanent process in action, everything that we do.
I really love that you guys put these guidelines out here. Like, it's really nice to see those constraints, and they are constraints, like, right, in terms of what you can do.
I think we talked so much about them and I've had no idea what they are. That's such an interesting.
They're elusive things that I know exist, but we never have been able to name them, so.
Okay, are there any, Corby, did you have something? Okay, are there any additional? Comments? We have the modification to indicator six. So is there a motion to um accept the indicators as presented with the modification that was previously discussed? It was John. All in favor, signify with I. Any opposed? Thank you so much. We really appreciate uh the work that went into creating these indicators. I really feel like this captures the conversation.
Yeah.
Thank you for letting us kind of bounce some ideas around. Yeah, this is good, this is.
Thank you very much, thank you, Chad.
Okay.
I just have one more statement to close.
Oh, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
I just want to close really quickly, um, and the reason I want to put this out there is both in modeling and also appreciation to our board of education. They're allowing me, allowing me to continue uh uh to grow and learn more as a leader. Uh, and so this past week was A S A, which is the national version of the superintendent's uh conference. And I want to bring back to, as we always should if we attend, we should bring back, come back with very important uh next steps. The two areas that I want to um, just kind of let you know for my leadership that I found some areas where. I I want to improve and get better on it, or be be twofold. One is the um. Bad, both in vast and just the how fast uh AI is moving and across our our world. Uh, and the and the impact on on education. Uh, Chad was able to join me out there for a a couple of other days as well. And you know, I I would guess probably every other session was AI. And the rapid, rapid advancement and what our our current kindergartens right right now will. Will experience by the time they have matriculated through our organization and the impact of events of of AI. Uh, as by most speakers and by most standards will outpace the impact of the internet. And and that is, and that's, you know, we understand. That that's the perspective you want to be able to get, so. Uh, we have began to work with Jason, um, and I tried to be that superintendent that gets out there and starts freaking everybody out like, hey. But th- these were important standards for us to both come before our board of education is. Where's our stance? How are we going to talk about and understand AI? Are we okay philosophically with? With the direction and movement and just have a broader presentation to our community as well as I I the impact of. Uh, the educational experience and what it means for for our students right now as compared to where where they will be. We know that if we, if we don't, not to stay on top of it, but if we don't stay. Uh, in in line with it and deepen our understanding, utilize it for educational purposes. We will inevitably create our own opportunity gaps here in a district, and that will be the new opportunity gap. Um, that that we know, um, that we, A, we use appropriately, it is the, is continues to be a equalizer or avancer. Of access to uh to communication and and supports. And it will will never take away, and I want to make sure our public understands this, there's never. Anything replaces human intelligence. It's all all inputs, but we have to be be mindful in thinking of. How are we asking and framing the right questions to to provide support to AI? How are we thinking about? Not asking questions that insert biases into the into the questions that that we're asking, and how do we utilize? Information to stimulate more productive thought, not do the thought for you. And and making, and ensuring that that's the way we we pursue, but if we don't teach those skill sets, then we kind of leave ourselves to the whims of. I'll just toy with this until I I get the response I want, and that's not what it's, that's not what it's intended for.
This is the conversation that our, my dad probably had with me about a calculator.
Are we going to be able, sorry, are we going to be able to to kind of? I think a presentation to the board, or I would just love to learn more because I think, like, even nuances of like. AI is proven to be racist and sexist, right? It is, it is built by humans and we are. We have implicit biases, so like, no matter what you ask it, it's still going to spit out something that is reflective. Of our systems that have biases today. There, it's really hard to prove whether or not. AI is plagiarizing other people's things in its responses to you. And I think the the crazy thing about. Technology is advancing exponentially faster as technology gets better and better, is that. We all have access to this thing that has not yet been like pressure tested whatsoever. And hasn't been regulated by Washington because. They're not going to do it. So I think it would be really helpful also to just like, I would love just general exposure to understand. How we're talking, not just to kids, but also our educators, to make sure that they use it. Powerfully, but also not in diminishing returns, right? Like, being a small business owner, everyone's like, use AI to write your LinkedIn posts. I can go through and tell you the crap garbage LinkedIn posts that people use AI to write. It's so obvious. And so I think that is a task I'm in no way jealous of, and I'm so happy that Jason is. Helping to partner and lead that charge. And I just think any visibility would be super cool.
Absolutely. Yeah, and that was really part of me bringing this immediately, you know, just a day away from returning, just talk about. The both the urgency, and I would never put a state of urgency in front of the board without prepping our team now. You know, and but we really, we want to think about where is our starting point. Uh, sometimes it's what is AI? And sometimes it's, you know, how is this specifically used for education? Uh, what is our research in that? And. Um, the crazy thing about it is by the time I get the sentence out, it already has changed. And and that's the, that's the 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 rate of pace that we're, that we're, that we're working with, so.
I wanted to say that you were joining the convention a little late on this.
No.
Because I missed the past two meetings. I didn't join an AI uh course in a certain district to implement. Different AIs, and so there's some AIs that are generative, so it's a controlled closed network. Where there's a group of teachers or experts only providing the feedback answers, and so it's not open.
Correct.
Chat GPT or. Open AI, the open AI, which I thought was very fascinating. Being able to explain the difference between the two, and which ones make the right the the most sense. In the classroom and certain experiences, but they also provided their list of. Which I think might be helpful, I'll share with everybody, of how the rules that they've set for their district on use of AI. For teachers and students.
Absolutely.
Really interesting, so. I don't know where I was going with that. Other than wanting to share that districts are already kind of starting to pay attention to this as well. There's some. Apps and AI tools already being in use. I don't know, they they talk about the apps that are in use.
Yes.
Like different.
Absolutely.
Chat GPT.
Correct.
Obviously, chat GPT.
Yep, yep.
But I'll share that with you guys separately.
Uh, and then quickly, second uh major topic was, is similar to what we talked about today in terms of. The uh quantitative data that we are using in the form of monitoring force, but I think overall is how. How do we not just tell the the story of our of our our district, or how do we make sure that our priority areas that we. Have uh produced as part of our strategic framework, how would we truly pull. Appropriate metrics to communicate those over to our uh community and to our our board of education that's not in. At end of the year type of type of report, you know, how are we is more consistent on probably quarterly updates of of our progress? Being able to understand the moves that, once we learn a data, the pivots that we. You know, and I think some of the vested by side got some some really good coaches in that moment is, you know, they follow, they kind of follow the run of their school district. And like, we've done a really masterful job of shifting culture, but culture is not enough to reach a level of excellence that you want to have in an organization. How are we really thinking about making all those priorities truly come come alive? Solid metrics, sound, solid inputs, and uh everyone not understands. Not just what we're measuring, but how we're doing the measuring itself. And so I, another area that. I want to continue to grow leadership with myself and this team is around that piece uh as well, so I can continue learning. Uh, so then, again, thank you to our board for allowing me the opportunity and space to continue to learn and grow. And also to continue commitment to always bring those back to strengthen our our growth here at the Runners School District.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, um, with that, we kind of concluded board action. Is there any um other updates or can we? Move on? We've had a packed schedule tonight, so um. We move on, public comments, there is none. Superintendent consent agenda, does everyone have a chance to take a look? Any questions, objections? Hearing none, superintendent consent agenda is approved as presented. We can take a look at the board consent agenda. Um, I just want to highlight that there is a um HVAC equipment replacement memo that's in our consent agenda packet. It's a a high level item. Um, appropriately included in consent agenda, but did want to just make sure that we've all kind of taken a look. Are there any questions about board consent? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved as presented. Um, future agenda items, we just have our upcoming meetings at this point. I gosh, we're already in March, so that's very exciting for our next meeting. Spring is on its way.
Um, also for anyone running, don't forget your continuing finance reports that are due. On a date that I should know, but all information can be found online at the website, or you can reach out to myself or Lori.
And it's only if you have to report.
Correct, if you if you have not absolved yourself from reporting to the campaign finance. Thank you.
April second is the upcoming election. Um, and with that, um. If we can adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five sub one sub G to confer with legal counsel. For the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to become involved regarding claims. Of personal injury. Is there a motion to adjourn? Or is there, yes, is there a second? Second by John. Um, all in favor, we'll do roll call votes, sorry, John.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Jen.
Hi.
Nicole.
Hi.
Juan Carlos.
Hi.
Corby. And Corby, we'll call you and have you on speakerphone for closed. Okay, with that, uh, I'm an I as well. We are officially um adjourning to closed session. Thank you. We'll give everybody just a couple of minutes.